You're gonna be talking about this. This law.
Good evening. This evening is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, and it is 5:31 PM, and we are starting our work session tonight. Tonight's work session has been a big talk in the community. I don't know if everybody really understands what the purpose is here tonight, but we are here to listen to Colorado abortion law. We are going to be talking about RIA, which is Colorado Reproductive Health and Equity Act. We're going to be talking about Colorado Amendment 79, and then we're going to be speaking about Colorado abortion law. This is a work session. There is no community interaction or questions, and we would like for the community outside this room to be able to hear what's being said, and so we, I'm asking that everyone keep the chatter down, the clapping down, the comments down, so that we could proceed through these meetings with respect for all of those who are here to listen, whether it be on television, through the television, or through present here in, in the chambers. And so, do we have anything from counsel before we start? You know, I would just like to say to my father, here I am. And let's go ahead and let's proceed with this evening, so. We'll get started with our first guests. Are they on Zoom, or are they present? Five. Okay, so our first guests are going to speak about the Colorado Reproductive Health Equity Act, RIA, and we have Jack Teeter, Regional Director of Government Affairs for Planned Parenthood of Rocky Mountains, and Jennifer Lemon, attorney. Is Jennifer with us tonight? There's no one on Zoom? Okay, good evening, Jack. Is Jen, is Jennifer joining us this evening?
I, I don't know, Jennifer. I can't speak to that.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, we'll go ahead and we'll start with you, Jack.
Great, thanks, members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Jack Teeter, I'm the Regional Director of Government Affairs at Planned Parenthood of Rocky Mountains. I'm, I'm hopeful we can keep this conversation fairly simple, but, you know, feel free to let me know if there's any questions I can answer for you all. Abortion care is-
He needs to speak up.
Can we turn the volume up, please? Thank you. Sorry, Jack, go ahead and continue.
No problem, how's this?
That's better.
Great.
Thank you.
I think we can keep this pretty simple, abortion care is a matter of statewide concern, so there's not much of anything in the policy realm here within the council's purview. On the question of whether the council has the authority to restrict access to abortion, the answer is, is really simple, you don't. Abortion's legal in Colorado, it's protected in state statute in several different ways and several different titles, notably including the Reproductive Health Equity Act, as you mentioned, and the 2023 reproductive health care protections. I'll review that along with the specific provisions around local government zoning and building facilities, which are typically the areas of interest for municipal governments. The Reproductive Health Equity Act, which is largely located in the Public Health Title, requires that a public entity shall not deny, restrict, interfere with, or discriminate against an individual's fundamental right to use or refuse contraception, or to continue a pregnancy and give birth, or to have an abortion in the regulation or provision of benefits, facilities, services, or information, or deprive through prosecution, punishment, or other means an individual of the individual's right to act or refrain from acting during the individual's own pregnancy based on the potential, actual, or perceived impact on the pregnancy, the pregnancy's outcomes, or on the pregnant individual's health. This Part IV applies to all state and local laws, ordinances, policies, procedures, regulatory guidelines, and rules, practices, executive orders, and governmental actions, and their implementation, whether statutory or otherwise. The rights protected under this Part IV are a matter of statewide concern. So the Reproductive Health Equity Act established that the right to access abortion care is a matter of statewide concern, and that means that only the Colorado General Assembly or statewide ballot initiative can take that away, it's not within the purview of city council. Municipalities like Pueblo that are organized under a home rule charter are free to legislate in matters of local concern. For more information on that, you can certainly review the Colorado Constitution, it's Article 20, Section 6B. The Colorado Supreme Court recognizes three categories of regulatory matters, there's matters of local concern, matters of statewide concern, and matters of mixed state and local concern. And in matters of statewide concern, like the question of abortion, the General Assembly can adopt legislation, and home rule municipalities are without power to act unless authorized specifically by the Constitution or state statute. The General Assembly declared in the Reproductive Health Equity Act that abortion's a matter of statewide concern, and they explicitly did not authorize local governments to intervene here. Furthermore, as of 2023, in CRS 29, that's the local government title, Chapter 20, Section 104, outlining the purview of local governments, subsection 1G, Rome 1, the General Assembly was again explicit that providing reproductive health care is a matter of statewide concern, and for the purposes of zoning and other land use planning, such as, you know, anything related to, whether it's a business or residential zone where you have healthcare providers of any kind, clinics fall within the meaning of a medical office use, a medical clinic use, or a healthcare use, and other facilities that provide outpatient healthcare services, so for the purposes of zoning and other land use planning, every local government that has adopted or adopts a zoning ordinance shall recognize the provision of outpatient reproductive health care as a permitted use in any zone in which the provision of general outpatient healthcare is recognized as a permitted use. You can't treat abortion differently. Medical offices that provide abortion care are not separately or differently regulated or licensed by the state. Generally speaking, the only facility types that have particular building requirements are those that have inpatient beds. And so in Title 25 of Colorado statutes, the types of facilities that are licensed by the state include general hospitals, hospital units as defined in Section 2531012, psychiatric hospitals, community clinics that provide emergency services or have short-term inpatient beds, rehabilitation hospitals, convalescence centers, community mental health centers, acute treatment units, facilities for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, nursing care facilities, hospice care, assisted living residences, dialysis treatment centers, ambulatory surgical centers, birthing centers, home care agencies, and other facilities of like nature. So in layman's terms, generally hospitals and hospital-like facilities that admit patients and have things like cafeterias. These are typically facilities with overnight rooms, and they need additional building codes around bathrooms being attached to patient rooms, and, and, you know, again, cafeterias, overnight spaces. Normal outpatient medical offices, like any of our primary care offices, our OB-GYN offices, abortion providers, pediatricians, those are not licensed as facilities, they're licensed as providers, and so that's the difference, people versus buildings. So my kid's pediatrician is licensed by the medical board and operates under the full laws, rules, regulations of the State Department of Health, the Colorado Medical Board, the Health Code, medical ethics boards, guidelines by the American Academy of Pediatricians, physicians, insurance groups, et cetera, but that pediatrician's office as a normal outpatient medical office is not a licensed building facility for the purposes of the Colorado Health Code, and indeed, it's sort of in a office park in an office building. We already regulate abortion providers in the same way we license all other outpatient medical providers, like all healthcare abortions highly regulated, but abortion providers are licensed by medical and nursing boards, like all providers are. We don't license the buildings or the facilities where they provide care, because the state does not generally license outpatient medical offices. Abortion is an outpatient medical procedure, it's provided in normal OB-GYNs' offices. While some people may choose to access abortion care at a hospital, data from the Vital Statistics Office at CDPHD shows that more than 99% of abortion care happens in these outpatient settings. So I think that largely covers it. If the council wishes to discuss abortion, they're certainly free to do so, but the council does not have the authority to restrict access to abortion care or to introduce new regulatory burdens on abortion providers at the local level. Thank you.
Let's keep our clapping to a minimum. Any questions from counsel?
I have a few questions. So you came here tonight to recite the RIA Act, which is law out of the Colorado state legislation, correct?
I came to answer questions for counsel, I mean, I can, I certainly can read the rest of RIA if you would like.
So you, you, you're not willing to answer questions from counsel?
No, I'm happy to answer questions.
Oh, okay, so, um, you came here to to recite the RIA Act, correct, which is out of this Colorado state legislation?
I came to answer questions, I don't know if I came to recite RIA, but I can if you'd like me to.
Well, you, you gave your opinion.
What is your question?
Excuse me. Is your, you, you gave your opinion on the RIA law, correct? Your interpretation?
That's the Attorney General's interpretation, too, they issued that opinion after the last time counsel-
Are you a licensed attorney in the state of Colorado?
I'm not, but I did personally write-
I'm just asking you that- I'm asking you the question, sir. This is a yes or a no?
Am I a lawyer? No.
He came here to learn about the RIA law. When we have questions for that, we're getting, we're about law, just like we do with our attorneys here at the city. We only get the advice from legal attorneys, and so I'm asking you if you're a legal attorney. Are you a licensed legal attorney in the state of Colorado?
No, no, I'm not a lawyer, but council invited me here, so I'm not sure what the question is.
No. Counselor Martinez requested that you come, and she told me that she was having someone come and recite RIA, and it was a licensed attorney, Jennifer Lemon, so I, I was surprised when I saw that you were with the Planned Parenthood, because we were, I was told in the email to me that it was an unbiased request, a request of an unbiased person wanting to talk about RIA, attorney wanting to talk about RIA. And so, that's, I'm asking you, are you a licensed attorney? And you said no. So it'd be, it would be against counsel's best interests to start asking questions of the RIA Act, because we, it, it's a law, and we would only be based, this is your opinion, it's not necessarily, it's your opinion as a as a Director of Government Affairs for Planned Parenthood, not your legal opinion. Yes?
Mr. Teeter, thank you so much for joining us, I want to correct the record that Ms. Lemon actually was supposed to be here today, but she has COVID, so we're proceeding without her, but Mr. Teeter, can you talk a little bit about your extensive experience with RIA?
Sure, I'm one of the people who helped write it, I have either personally written or contributed to the drafting of all of Colorado's abortion laws in the last 10 years, including the abortion shield laws, Colorado's requirement for full insurance coverage for abortion care, a variety of others, the specific provisions around abortion being a matter of statewide concern, so, no, I'm not an attorney, but we have, you know, a handful of great attorneys, including the Colorado Attorney General, who have interpreted RIA and been very clear that it's a matter of statewide concern, and that we can't pass local abortion bans. The council, I think, discussed this a couple of years ago, the Attorney General at the time was very clear that RIA would be enforced. So you can ask a handful of attorneys the same questions that you want to ask me, but the question of whether or not matters of statewide concern are under the purview of municipal governments is, is pretty readily answered in Denver versus State, that's 1990, went to the Colorado Supreme Court. Some things are within the purview of local governments, and some things aren't, and this is not.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Teeter, you know, I want, there's a lot of faces in the audience today, so I want to thank everyone for coming, and I want to start by saying the only reason that we're here, having this hearing, is because people's feelings are hurt, that they can't control women's choices and bodies. And instead of allowing the people to decide on the right to abortion in our state constitution during the upcoming election, something that voters have overwhelmingly supported in the past, as seen in 1988, 1998, 2000, 2008, 2010, 2014, and 2020, this council is wasting taxpayer dollars and city resources discussing the regulation, the possibility of regulating abortion services, and we just heard from an expert that municipalities lack the authority to do so under the state's Reproductive Health Equity Act. So to, to illustrate this wastefulness of a session, I've calculated the cost of hosting tonight's work session. So with the necessary resources, including technology, the expense amounts to around $1,500 just to have this tonight. And this figure doesn't even include the salaries for the staff members who have to be here for us to operate, like our city attorneys, the clerk's office, the mayor's office, IT personnel. And moreover, we're wasting precious time. During public forum, forum, every other week, we hear from constituents urging us to address things like crime rates, solving the complex issues of homelessness, cleaning, cleaning up lighted buildings, managing trash and weeds, and improving economic development opportunities. And these are the issues that we, as counsel, can and should be addressing, yet instead of focusing on these pressing concerns and seeking collective issues, we're discussing matters over which we have no jurisdiction. So that said, I am, I am grateful that we have an expert like Mr. Teeter here today to discuss RIA and provide us with factual information. I guess I have a, a follow-up question, Mr. Teeter. Can you clarify, yes or no, are abortion providers regulated?
Yes.
My second question, and, and then we'll be done, and I appreciate your time. This is a yes or no question. Can Pueblo consider anything related to regulating abortion services? Thank you.
All right. So, um, again, she, a statement was opened based off of someone's opinion. That was based off of their opinion about, all right, okay. This is your last warning, this is your last warning. That's, this is your last warning, if you want to stay a guest here. Stop, 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 stop. We're not gonna get anywhere here. I would think that, what is your, what is your, the regulating agency? What, what is the name of your regulating agency? Mr. Teeter?
There are several.
Okay, go ahead and name them, we'd like to know.
Sure, well, we can start with the medical board, the nursing board. All healthcare providers are, obviously have to go to med school, nursing school, they have to get licensed, they have to be licensed in the state of Colorado. They're required to cover professional insurance, liability insurance, with which they can't operate care, it's a really important part of patient care. All nonprofits have to be licensed as nonprofits in the state, you gotta get licensed to provide payroll, so there's a, you know, long list of-
Who comes into the clinic and regulates the data, the, what goes on in the clinic, the cleanliness of the clinic, who does that?
So providers are licensed by the medical board and nursing board, data goes through lots of different agencies. So some data goes to CDPHD, the Office of Vital Statistics tracks abortion care, there's plenty of data on their website, you can look up the reports of induced termination of pregnancy. Lots of data obviously thro, flows through the Department of Regulatory Agencies, the Division of Insurance, through HICPuff, all of our claims data, so, I mean, we have an entire data team, there's an enormous amount of data that goes to probably six or seven different state agencies.
Okay, well, thank you. So it looks like what, I remember we had a, a quite of a, a little bit of a disc, back and forth discussion the other night, and I was accused of saying things that were not true, but yet, the only person that Counselor Martinez has brought to the table is someone that's gonna come here, and they're not a lawyer, and they're gonna recite the law, and they're gonna tell us that we are not able to do anything within our community. That, guess what, they tell us that about needles, they tell us that about the homeless. They tell that, tell the, us about the crime, they've decriminalized. What has happened is that state legislators have imposed laws and, and put them in place to basically almost dissipate morality in our community, and as a community, as a community, we have the right to have certain expectations of how our community runs in a healthy atmosphere, I, I, we want a healthy community, we want a healthy and safe community. I would think that if we were to see whether you're pro-life or you're pro-choice, you would want for women to be safe. You would want healthcare to be, their healthcare to be safe, and you'd want it to be regulated. So we're gonna continue on, since we're not really getting anything from the RIA people to tell us anything other than we, that we, there was a law that was brought forth. There was a law that was brought forth by our state legislation prior to us having any lobbyists in place, which we put on council here just recently, in the past couple of years, that really notify us when local jurisdiction is losing control of what goes on with their laws. And so we fight really hard against that here on the council, that we are not stripped of our local control, because we have ended up in situations where we have laws that have decriminalized the ju, in the justice system, that are affecting the crime and safety issues of today. And so, you know, if we're going to move forward as a community and start to do some more prosecute the gambling casinos, when they're a state, that's a state law, but we've taken measures to make sure that those places are safe. If we're gonna do that with hotels and motels, if we're going to do that by cleaning up homeless encampments, we should make sure that all community members are safe and free from environmental issues, health issues, and just safety overall, and so. And as we go, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna go move into our next guest, because our, yes, Mr., Mr. Flores, go ahead.
Yeah, there's been a lot of comments tonight that we don't have a firm legal opinion, that we have an attorney that's missing. I have a letter here from the Attorney General, who is an attorney, indicating it, it's dated September 23rd, it's signed by Phil Weiser, Attorney General, and I won't read the whole letter, because I think the gentleman spoke previously, went over most of this, but I'm gonna read the last two paragraphs. It says, "The prohibitions contained in the Act specifically apply to local laws, ordinances, or any governmental actions. Therefore, while the proposed ordinance's specific language is unavailable, unavailable for review by the Attorney General's office, any such local law approved by the city council that impedes upon the, impedes upon the fundamental right guaranteed in the Act, or that takes one or more of the prohibited actions stated in 256404 CRS, would be in violation of Colorado state law." And the last paragraph states, "As the Attorney General's office is the vest, is vested with the authority to independently initiate and bring civil and criminal actions to enforce state laws, including the Reproductive Health Equity Act, Part IV of Article 6 of Title 25, etc., should the Pueblo City Council enact a proposed ordinance that violates RIA, the Attorney General's office will defend the state laws on this matter and seek judicial resolution in court."
So, which means that we're gonna get sued, we'll get sued. That's what that means, is we're gonna get sued again.
You know, um-
So, so we do have a legal opinion, it is from the highest attorney in the state, so anyone that wants to have a-
He said state laws, he didn't specify RIA in that last, in that last sentence. But anyways, going back to this, municipalities and counties push back on the state all the time across the nation, when they do not like what's going on in their community, and when it affects their community in a negative way. So, we, we will, we will, if, if that's what this council decides to do, that's what they will do, because I'm gonna tell you that there are, okay, all right. Enough, because I'm gonna start eliminating people. You're not gonna filibuster. I, I will start eliminating people from the room. It's really sad that we're just here to listen, and you don't want to listen. You want to filibuster, you want to get through the crowd, and you want to continue to mock and, and make, and call names, and we have women at risk, their health and their safety at risk. And so, we are going to go ahead, and we are gonna move forward with, we are going to go ahead and move forward with Amendment 79 from our lobbyists at Capital Success Group. Hello, Mr. Romero, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of council, Alec Romero with Capital Success Group. Our team was asked to do a presentation on Amendment 79. It is a statewide ballot measure that will be on the November ballot. All of this information presented tonight can be found in the 2024 Colorado Blue Book. Are members of council able to see the PowerPoint, okay?
We're getting it pulled up right now, Alec.
Thank you. My next slide, please. So Amendment 79 does three main things, it establishes abortion as a constitutional right, and in Colorado, it prohibits state and local governments from denying, impeding, or discriminating against this right. It repeals the current ban on public funding for abortion services. As you know, Colorado's Reproductive Health Equity Act passed in 2022 already protects abortion rights, but that protection is statutory. If passed, this amendment would place this right directly into the state constitution, making it a stronger and more permanent protection. Next slide, please. To give you some context, on abortion law in Colorado, in 1997, 1967, Colorado legalized abortion under limited circumstances. And then in 1973, Roe v. Wade established a federal right to abortion. And then in 1984, Colorado voters added a ban on public funding for abortion to the state constitution. And then in 2022, Dobbs versus Jackson overturned Roe, returning abortion regulation to the states. Following that decision, Colorado passed RIA to protect, protect reproductive rights at the state level. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone, Ryan Romero with Capital Success Group. What restrictions are there on government funding for abortion services, and how does this, how does Amendment 79 change this? Under the 1984 constitutional amendment, public funding for abortion services are prohibited through Medicaid and health insurance plans offered to state and local government employees. There are, however, exceptions in both federal and state law that allow Medicaid to pay for abortions when the life of a pregnant woman is in danger, or the pregnant, pregnancy is the result of rape or incest. If passed, Amendment 79 will repeal this 1984 ban on public funding for abortion services. This means that state and local money could potentially be used to pay for abortions through Medicaid and government employee health insurance plans. However, Amendment 79 does not guarantee funding. Decisions about whether or how to fund abortion services will be made by the Colorado Legislature and local governments in the future. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. To summarize, a yes vote on Amendment 79 places the right to abortion in the Colorado Constitution, and it repeals the ban on state and local funding for abortion service. A no vote maintains the current ban on public funding for abortions, and keeps abortion regulation under the control of the Colorado State Legislature. That concludes our presentation for this evening, once again, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the council for your time and attention. As a reminder, all of the information that was in our presentation can be found in the 2024 Colorado Blue Book. For further details, you can refer to the Blue Book using the link in our, in our presentation, or simply type 2024 Colorado Blue Book into a search bar. And we're happy to take any questions at this time, thank you.
Any questions from counsel? Any questions from Council? So let me, one question I have for you, Mr. Romero, we'll go back to the page. Can we go back to the page where it talks about funding? So again, Mr. Romero, there, at the current time, there is no pub, public funding on abortions, for abortions, correct?
Correct.
And we're asking that, we're asking the citizens to vote so that it could be, be paid through with, through Medicaid with taxpayer dollars. Is that correct? Or is that's not been established yet? Is this a amendment that has come out, but there hasn't been, they're just asking for it to be paid through public funding, but they haven't established what, at, how that was going to be paid through public funding? Is that?
Madam Chair, that is my understanding. This does not automatically allocate funds. It just removes the ban. And those future funding decisions would have to be, be made by the Colorado Legislature and local governments.
Okay, just, I don't know if you would be able to answer this or not. So it's, it's a possibility that Carhart IV was just saying that he had 47% of his abortions that he was performing at the Pueblo Clinic were from out of state. Is it possible that someone coming into that facility may use, be able to use our Pueblo taxpayer, Colorado PAC taxpayer dollars to receive an abortion even though they're not a citizen of the state of Colorado?
Ma, Madam Chair, I, I think we would have to defer to a legal expert on that.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll have to refer to a legal expert on that. And so, yes, are you?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you for acknowledging that you guys aren't lawyers. There was an issue about not getting a lawyer's opinion a couple of minutes ago. So I just want to point out that to the Romero team, thanks for all that really good information. Am I hearing it correctly that if a kindergartner, teacher, or some sort of public servant, if they're sexually assaulted right now, her insurance wouldn't cover abortion care if she needed it, but this would change that, correct?
Councilwoman Martinez, I apologize, but I think this is another one that I, I would feel more comfortable leaving that to a legal expert.
So how I understand Amendment 79 is that if a kindergarten, if, if, if a public servant were to get sexually assaulted and were to use their private insurance to cover abortion care, then they could allow, if, when this passes. And that's so critically important. That's it.
But also, I'm sorry, Mr. Romero, also, it is saying that privatized insurances have to have to make sure that the abortion services are part of their policy, correct?
I don't, I don't have an answer on that one. I apologize, Madam Chair.
That's okay. All righty, gentlemen, their law, the Capital Success Group are lobbyists. They come and they explain amendments and ballot measures and bills to us all the time. That's what they do for a living. So that makes them an expert within that purview. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so our final guest this evening is going to be the topic is Colorado abortion law. Our guest is Josh Craddock, attorney with the James Wilson Institute. Welcome, Mr. Craddock.
Can you hear me now? Thank you so much for inviting me here today. My name is Josh Craddock. I'm a Colorado attorney and a constitutional legal scholar affiliated with the James Wilson Institute, a legal think tank. I'm a graduate of the Harvard Law School and a former clerk on the United States Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit. I'm also a fifth-generation Coloradan with strong ties to Pueblo. When my ancestors moved to Colorado in the 1880s, they actually settled here in Pueblo and they're buried in the cemetery just down the road. I'm pleased to offer my testimony today on my, my own behalf and not on behalf of any employer or client about the status of Colorado abortion law and their effect on this community. Many are surprised to learn that Colorado has among the most radical abortion laws in the nation and indeed in the world. In Colorado, abortion is legal through all nine months of pregnancy up until the day of birth. Colorado is one of only seven states without any limits on when an abortion can occur during pregnancy. In fact, Colorado is less protective of unborn life than nearly every other country in the world. Only a handful of countries, including China, North Korea, and Vietnam, allow abortion as late as Colorado. Yet, under the 2022 Reproductive Health Equity Act, RIA, abortion was declared a fundamental right throughout pregnancy and all legal rights were stripped from unborn children. RIA effectively made abortion an unregulated industry in Colorado. The so-called care clinic here in Pueblo advertises surgical abortions up to 24 weeks of pregnancy. According to the Mayo Clinic, at 24 weeks of pregnancy, when the baby is about 22 weeks old developmentally, the baby's fingerprints have begun to develop and the mother might feel her hiccup in her womb. Babies born prematurely at this age have actually survived outside the womb. Here's a picture of the baby's face at six months, right? 22 weeks old, 24 weeks gestation. You can skip to the next slide. Yet Colorado has no law protecting born alive infants like those who would survive abortions at this stage. No Colorado law clarifies that infants who survive failed abortions are entitled to reasonable measures to save their lives. The Colorado Department of Health is not required to keep records of how many children are born alive after abortions. But in Minnesota, where such record-keeping is required, 24 babies were born alive after attempted abortions between 2015 and 2022, according to Minnesota State Health Records. That means that in Colorado, a 22-week-old baby born prematurely in the labor and delivery ward that is regulated enjoys all the rights of any other Colorado citizen and will be given the highest standard of care in the NICU. But a 34-week-old child in utero enjoys no such rights at the abortion clinic. And in fact, if she survives a failed abortion, the doctor is under no obligation to provide life-sustaining care. Up in Boulder, abortionist Warren Hearn has offered abortions for the last 50 years, even after 34 weeks of pregnancy. That's 32 weeks of developmental age. At that age, at 32 weeks gestational age, right, from, from last menstrual period, at 32 weeks, the unborn baby practices breathing and her fingernails are visible. All of her internal organs are developed, her fingers and toes clearly visible. In an article for Slate Magazine authored by Dr. Warren Hearn in 2003, Hearn asked in the title of the article, "Did I Violate the Partial Birth Abortion Ban?" And he described how he performed an abortion on a baby that was 17 weeks gestation. Quote, you can skip to the next slide. "I inserted my forceps into the uterus and applied them to the head of the fetus, which was still alive, since fetal injection is not done at that stage of pregnancy. I closed the forceps, crushing the skull of the fetus and withdrew the forceps. The fetus, now dead, slid out more or less intact." You can take that down. In 2022, there were 487 abortions at 21 weeks gestation or later in Colorado, well past the time when babies can feel pain, which is a disturbing increase of 186% from 2021. That's according to self-reported data from clinics, which they're not required to provide, but they voluntarily provide. There's no oversight or audit of those numbers, but those are the numbers given by the clinics themselves. Abortions in Colorado may also be performed by non-physicians. Under Colorado law, non-physician healthcare providers may perform abortions if they're acting within their professional scope of practice. In fact, according to RIA, there can be no prosecution, punishment, or any other restriction on the individual's absolute right to access abortion. So in theory, anyone could perform an abortion and there would be no prosecution, punishment, or any restriction. Non-physicians, such as nurse practitioners, nurse midwives, and physician's assistants are also permitted to prescribe abortion pills in the first 10 weeks of pregnancy through telehealth without even having an in-person consultation. Many abortion businesses, including Planned Parenthood, which Jack Teeter represented, prescribed the abortion pill beyond the 10-week limit as a matter of official policy. And telehealth providers do not always require that the patients be physically located in Colorado during the consultation, allowing for abortion tourism. An in-person consultation would normally involve counseling about alternatives and a discussion of the risks, including the importance of accurate gestational dating, RH-negative identification in response, and confirmation of a non ectopic pregnancy. Dispensing abortion pills without an in-person doctor visit also heightens the risk of abortion coercion. It enables abusers and predators to more easily acquire abortion pills, which they can use to pressure mothers to consume or even surreptitiously administer to unsuspecting women. The American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists reported that in 2007, the prevalence of intimate partner violence was nearly three times greater for women seeking an abortion compared with women who are continuing their pregnancies. So these are women who are especially vulnerable. But neither the CDC nor the Colorado Department of Health nor the Guttmacher Institute, which is the research wing of Planned Parenthood, record or even report coerced abortions or coerced chemical abortions. Those are not, those are not reported in work or recorded in the FDA's publication of adverse event reports. Women who obtain abortion pills are also denied information in Colorado about abortion pill reversal. Abortion pill reversal is a safe process that allows a woman a chance to continue her pregnancy if she should change her mind after having, taking the first Mifepristone pill. But in 2023, Colorado passed a law prohibiting medical professionals from providing information and access to abortion pill reversal. So much for choice. The law also beds, bans medical professionals from even advertising abortion pill perverse, reversal. Now, because unborn children have no legal rights in Colorado, our law doesn't recognize any injury to an unborn child when he or she is killed by violent criminals. 38 states have fetal homicide laws, but Colorado isn't one of them. In 2018, when Christopher Watts murdered his pregnant wife and two toddlers in Frederick, Colorado, he wasn't charged with the death of his unborn child. When lawmakers tried to ensure that prosecutors could charge people like Christopher Watts for killing his own unborn child, Planned Parenthood's Kathy Alderman opposed the bill and called it dangerous. Now, with Amendment 79 on the ballot, late-term abortion would be, an unregulated abortion would be enshrined in the Colorado Constitution if it passes. The amendment is so broad that it could actually prohibit Colorado Legislature from passing laws in the future to regulate safety or protect unborn children from abortion in any way. And it attempts to restrict local communities from deciding what their policies should be with respect to abortion. It would also have the effect of repealing the existing constitutional ban on state and local funding for abortion. So this would require Colorado taxpayers to fund abortion through Medicaid or state or local government health, employee health insurance plans. Now, this goes to the last point on, I believe it was Mr. Romero's presentation, where he pointed out that private health insurance wouldn't be covered by Amendment 79. And that's true, but it fails to take into account how Amendment 79 would interact with existing Colorado law. That's because a 2023 law enacted by the Legislature, SB 23189, requires large employer health benefit plans issued or renewed on or after January 1st, 2025 to provide coverage for the total cost of abortion without policy deductibles, co-payments, or co-insurance. Individual and small group health benefit plans must also provide this coverage if the HHS confirms that the state's determination that the coverage is not subject to state defraile pursuant to federal law. So the combination of that 2023 law and the Amendment 79 would effectively require, right? It's still going to require state, or sorry, private health insurance plans to cover abortion without any deductible or co-insurance or anything like that. So if Amendment 79 passes, that means that public entities and private entities are going to be paying for abortions at taxpayer expense and without deductibles. Now, in 2022, because of Colorado's radical abortion laws, nearly 30% of abortions in Colorado were performed on non-residents who traveled here from out of state. NPR Colorado actually described it in an article as a surge of travelers seeking abortions here. According to provisional Colorado Health Department data, again, self-reported, about 4,200 patients came to Colorado out of about 14,400 abortions performed. Now, to put that number in perspective, the leading cause of death in Colorado in 2023 was cancer, which killed 8,400 people. If the deaths of unborn children from abortion were counted, surgical abortions would account for nearly the top two causes of death, cancer and heart disease, disease combined. The barbaric abortion policy of communist countries like China, North Korea, and Vietnam shouldn't be a model for Pueblo. Under Article 20, Section 6 of the Colorado Constitution, home rule cities like Pueblo are vested with and shall always have all other powers necessary, requisite, or proper for the government and administration of its local and municipal matters. That section grants and confirms the full right to self-government in both local and municipal matters. Now, you heard Jack Teeter say that, well, RIA tries to take some of that, those rights from Puebloans and to decide what's right for their community, but that, he was specifically talking about zoning, which is traditionally a local area of concern. But nothing in RIA says that a state or a, a local ordinance like here in, in, in Pueblo could do anything broader than what is permissible under federal law, right? So that's something that's been ignored in this conversation. The people of Pueblo should have a say in what's right for their community and not just the legislators up in Denver or the abortion industry activists that profit from their abortion and apparently are involved in writing their own regulations. That's unusual for a regulated party. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Craddock. Thank you, Mr. Craddock. That's, that was, I am, I'm glad that we have connected and that you could bring a professional legal opinion to the table. Any questions from Council?
I've got one.
Okay, Counselor Gomez.
I'm trying to figure out where, where we're going from here. You know, we've heard both sides openly and I just wish we would be a little bit more behaved, but that's just me. And everybody's really, this is an emotional issue for a lot of folks, but we need, I know this is an emotional issue for a lot of folks, but we got to respect each other for what it's worth. But I appreciate everybody coming tonight and I'm just kind of figuring where we're headed.
Go ahead, Counselor Martinez.
Yeah, thanks for coming to speak and giving your perspective tonight. This is a yes or no question. Is abortion currently regulated in the state of Colorado?
It is subject to the same regulations, like they're required to have insurance. For example, doctors who perform abortions are required to be, you know, subject to the medical board. But as I pointed out, you know, doctor, doctors aren't even required to, right? You could have non-doctors performing abortions in the state of Colorado. So sure, there are some regulations, but nothing that would ensure health or safety or protect the lives of late-term babies subjected to abortion.
So yes, abortion providers are regulated in the state of Colorado.
The, the abortion industry is not, is, is subject to some regulations that are tangential, but there is no one going to inspect safety, for example. There's no one going to inspect clinic, clinic health and safety. Those types of typical regulations are not seen here in Colorado.
Do other physician offices also get inspected like you were just suggesting?
In many states, such inspections are required in abortion facilities and in Colorado, and in Colorado, hospitals, for example, are subjected to those sorts of inspections.
I asked about physician offices?
But not, not typically, not typically outpatient physician offices, but here we're talking about a invasive surgical procedure where it would make sense.
This is another yes or no question. Can Pueblo consider regulating any type of abortion care or abortion service? Under RIA?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Well, why don't you explain that further, Mr. Craddock?
So the, the answer is yes. RIA as a state law preempts local ordinances, right? As a general rule. But that same is true But that same is true of federal law as to state law, right? Article 6 of our US Constitution says that the federal constitution and the laws of the United States are supreme over state law. So if our state law is broader than what is permissible under federal law, then the state law is preempted to that extent. So for example, federal law prohibits partial birth abortions. If RIA were read to be so broad, protect a right to abortion so broad as to allow partial birth abortions, that would be nullified. And this council would be perfectly justified in passing an ordinance ensuring that partial birth abortions are not permitted, consistent with federal law.
You know, the Attorney General, General Wise, Phil Weiser, who is the highest legal authority in the state of Colorado, why do you think he would disagree with you?
Oh, that, that's a great question, and I'm glad you asked. I reviewed Phil Weiser's letter, and it's incomplete because he fails to consider how federal law is supreme over RIA to the extent they are inconsistent. So he gets an incomplete grade on that letter, and he's doing it for political purposes.
I could say the same thing about your testimony.
I'm not an elected official. I'm not, I'm not an elected official who gets donations from Planned Parenthood. I'm not an elected official who gets donations from Planned Parenthood.
So we attempt, we attempted this before, Mr. Craddock, when, um, the late-term abortionist, um, who is now deceased. It's my understanding there are only four in the country, correct? Now three, with him being deceased. Is that correct?
And, and Warren Hearn up in Boulder is one of them, yes.
Yes, and the, the doctor in Boulder is one of them. And I noticed that, um, that when I was looking, watching the licensing for our current clinic, which that is one of the things of the, uh, regulations that we have to have a licensed physician, um, basically hang their shingle there, correct? Do they have to be there?
So under, under Colorado law, uh, even non-physicians can perform abortions. So that's part of the, goes to the part about how unregulated the abortion industry is and how we have regulated parties writing the laws that are supposed to regulate them.
Okay. And so, um, it looks like their, their newest, um, a doctor, or their, their newest abortionist on call, um, is based out of San Antonio, Texas. Um, and he, it, there was a lapse that I found in, I mean, all I need to do is just follow the licensing on DORA. And I see that, um, Dr. Carhart died in April of 2022, and the current doctor there was, um, practicing, they were performing abortions, but his licensing wasn't valid until December of 2022. So that was kind of prohibiting, they were, they were, uh, breaking the law there, I would think. Or, or maybe there wasn't. I'm asking a lawyer.
Yeah, I, I don't know the, the specific facts of, of this case. So I know that, I know that Carhart died in 2023, and I, I don't know the specific facts of how they're, you know, what, what the, what the local licensure requirement was there.
Okay, okay. So, all right. Any questions? Any further questions from counsel? Go ahead. Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, for what it's worth, I just think it's been okay to hear both sides tonight. And this is the way we should be handling a lot of these issues. So it's not a waste of my time. I hope it's not a waste of this council's time to hear both sides.
Counselor Latino?
I'd just like to say that, uh, basically federal law supersedes anything the state brings up. So I think that's something that we have to understand. Okay?
That's, that's right. And so there's several federal laws that would be applicable here. Uh, so of course, there's the partial birth abortion ban, which was the one that, you know, Warren Hearn was saying, "Am I violating it by doing these late-term abortions?" He was asking that in a published article in Salon, was it Slate or Salon, uh, magazine, right? And so, um, that's one federal law that could be at issue. And state law can't create a right to abortion that's broader than what federal law allows. The second aspect of this is actually federal law that prohibits the interstate shipment and carriage of abortion pills and devices across state lines through the postal service, or sorry, across state lines through, uh, common carriers like, uh, like, you know, DHL or FedEx or through the US Postal Service anywhere. And so that's a federal law, uh, that, you know, a, a ordinance here in, in Pueblo could address and say, hey, look, in Pueblo, we're, we're just establishing that in Pueblo, we're going to follow federal law. Uh, there's no inconsistency there, uh, between state law and the local ordinance. And if there were, uh, right, the state law would have to bend in favor of the federal law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is how many communities has this been, this, uh, particular ordinance been in? And how many, across how many states?
Yeah, I know that there's been a number of different communities that have enacted ordinances like this through a number of different states. Uh, Hobbs, New Mexico is one of them nearby. There's many state, uh, many cities and localities in Texas. I'm aware of some in Illinois and Indiana. So across the country, uh, there are dozens, there are dozens of ordinances. Uh, in, in Colorado, uh, Pueblo would be the first, and I encourage you to do so.
Okay. And so, um, oh, Sarah's got another question. Okay.
Mr. Gifford, our own city attorney that represents the city and this council, what's your legal opinion? Do you think that would, uh, federal law trump state law?
What we're, what we're referring to is the Comstock Act, I believe, of 1873, which was amended in 1872 or 73 to, uh, to prohibit the mailing of abortion services. Now, much in the same way that Attorney General Phil Weiser issued a letter, the, the US Attorney General has also issued the same letter, which, um, I, I don't think necessarily agrees with what's being presented here tonight. Currently, the ordinances that have been passed in New Mexico or at the New Mexico Supreme Court awaiting decision, they were challenged immediately and stayed. And if you were to look at where these ordinance have been passed, the majority of them have been passed in Texas, and the majority of those have been passed in communities of 300 to 400 people. Tiny, tiny towns, which I, I would, I don't even know if they would have an abortion clinic there. Furthermore, I believe abortion, abortion is banned in Texas at six weeks. So it's a totally different situation in New Mexico, in Texas, and in Colorado. I don't see anything that's been presented this evening that would make me think that we could pass an ordinance saying that we were going to enforce the Comstock Act and somehow prohibit abortion based on RIA, which is very clear. It uses just about every synonym you can have for the word "don't" when it comes to restricting abortion. And I, I'm not, I'm not meaning to be glib. I'm not meaning to be glib. This is, this is something that's very serious, and I think everyone has a serious opinion on this. So, um, and until I'm presented with something that states otherwise, I just don't, I don't think that we would be wise to pass this ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Craddock?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Gifford, for that, uh, intervention. I want to add that, uh, on the Comstock Act, which is 18 U.S.C. 1461, 1462, it's been around for about 150 years, but it was most recently amended and revised by Congress and President Clinton in 1996 to actually expand 1462's application to interactive computer services, making it illegal to use the internet to ship or receive abortifacients. And actually, Section, uh, 1461 continues to be included in the most recent edition of the US Post Office's Publication 52, which states that any article or instrument designed, adapted, or intended for producing abortion is non-mailable. Uh, so I understand that the Attorney General, Merrick Garland, has issued, that the Office of Legal Counsel has issued an interpretation of what this Comstock Act means. Uh, but, you know, courts have yet to weigh in on this in full. One judge of the Fifth Circuit, US Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit, has opined that this law is still fully enacted. And in fact, there were questions about this before the Supreme Court, where at least two Supreme Court justices have indicated their position, suggesting that the Attorney General's, uh, interpretation of this law might be misguided. So I think it's hardly from, hardly a settled case, uh, that, uh, you know, just because the OLC issued an opinion giving this an extraordinary, extraordinarily narrow interpretation that that is the last word. My final comment is that to the extent 1461 and 1462 mean what Attorney General Garland said in the OLC opinion, then there would be no conflict between federal law and state law, and thus no conflict between state law and the ordinance. So either way, this council has authority to pass such an ordinance because either there is a conflict with state law and federal law trumps, right? Or there is no conflict with state law whatsoever because there's no conflict with state and federal, between state and federal law.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Boston?
I just want to appreciate everybody for coming tonight and more so a point of order. You know, uh, I understand everybody's very passionate about different issues that get brought to us, whether it be the bathhouse, the needle exchange, or this issue at hand. I think it's very important as the elected officials that are voted in these positions, making these decisions, we do get to hear both sides and all pieces of an argument. Um, I know everybody is passionate, but when somebody is giving information that may help us in a situation, make a more informed decision, I do please, please ask that you respect everybody in the room. It is okay to disagree on things, but just please be respectful so we can get the facts on both sides, so we can make a more informed decision. It's really hard for me to hear. Um, I may be young, but my ears aren't as good as they used to be. So it, just like, you know, future tense, anytime anybody is up here giving their time, whether it's through public comment or giving their opinion on any matter, just please be respectful so that we can hear and make a more informed decision that is in the best interest of this public. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Boston. Uh, Counselor Martinez?
I guess this is just more me being curious. If what you're saying is true and federal law trumps state law, why haven't you sued the state over RIA?
Well, so, so to be clear, um, there's, right now, the, you, you have to have something, a cause of action to sue. And so the, what the ordinance would be providing would be providing a private cause of action, for example, to private citizens to bring a civil suit for enforcement to ensure that federal law is followed in the municipal, in, in, within Pueblo, right? So because to sue, you have to have what's called a cause of action, like some legal right granting you authority to sue. And so that's actually what the ordinance would allow to ensure that federal law is being followed.
Perhaps no other Colorado community, though, has implemented this because they know that RIA protects any sort of municipality from regulating any type of abortion service.
Well, I, I don't think that's the case because the ordinance itself would not, is, again, as I explained, the RIA cannot preempt the ordinance if the ordinance is consistent with federal law. Right? Because federal law trumps state law. And so to the extent that there is any inconsistency between federal law and state law, there's, they can't preempt the ordinance.
So, Mr. Craddock, you know, RIA was brought forth by state legislation. It was not brought, brought forth by a vote of the people. And so when RIA was put in place, it, it was put in place up at the Capitol. The people didn't vote on it. We get a lot of laws that are not voted on, um, that try to take away our home rule authority to decide what we feel is best for our community. We're suffering from, you know, the needle exchanges and the open drug use and the crime because of the decriminalization. And it just goes on and on and on. And, um, I'm not for, you know, I know that a good, large part of my community is screaming for crime and safety, health and safety. And so I am going to, um, bring issues forward so that people have a better understanding, even when they're voting here, um, on Amendment 79. Are we going to continue to feed the beast? Or are we going to try to, if abortion's going to be legal, we're going to try to, um, you know, as, as communities across this state try to make legislators accountable and the abortion clinics accountable, accountable when they're treating women, uh, for these procedures. It's unfortunate that, uh, this state doesn't, we have such a radical abortion law that, um, goes through the ninth month. That's just a shame in itself. I mean, there's no restrictions. I don't know that pro-choice has benefited women's choice if they're not protected health and safety-wise. And so, um, I, I feel like the opposition to, um, putting regulations on it is more pro-abortion than they are pro-choice. But that's just my personal opinion. And so, um, I thank you for your time this evening. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will adjourn. The time is 6:36, and we will adjourn.